Hey Patrick.
Hey.
Only the board can authorize us to shut it down.
Oh my God.
This is a board decision, what do you want to do?
Wow.
We are live on YouTube, NLJ.com. If you'll speak up, because I am a little bit of far away from you, but you won't get that.
We're recording on Facebook.
Are we recording on Zoom?
No. The Zoom is off. They hacked your system.
Yeah, but now we want Connie in our attorney.
Oh my God.
That's pretty dagum exciting.
It's not the word I use.
Legends have seen my concert checks, and they can joke toilet or take care of anything else. Next slide please.
So I'm just curious.
I'm sorry, this is a board meeting.
What do you mean? We're all taxpayers, can we not speak at board meetings?
Only the board decides who can speak.
Who is the director of this?
Next slide please.
We don't need a class, we need to know what's going on.
Yeah. We're not here.
We don't want to hear your spew. We don't even know you guys. This is our town.
We're the taxpayers, we pay.
This is why there's so many people here if you haven't noticed.
And you're one of the reasons.
Yes. We have an eye on people that are just like you that's caused this problem that we got going. And you hired them.
I am so sorry that these board members hired this CEO.
Yes.
What a shame.
Excuse me. What I'm saying is, is that part of this board meeting, the beginning of the agenda, was to have the presentation from the people that we hired to come here. After their presentation.
Who hired them though?
The board did.
You have nothing better to do than try to drown this hospital?
Sir, please. What I'm saying is.
That's what you're doing and the whole community knows.
We're waiting for the presentation to be finished, and then we'll be happy to take it in comments.
Yeah. And how many hours is this presentation?
I'm not, I'm not involved with this at all. I would let them give their talk. Have you talked to any board members? I hope you are going to have a public thing on your agenda.
It's the one there, sir.
Thank you. Make sure they know that. They just have to wait, you just have to wait till this gets done.
Go back.
So I want to point out some of the absolute strengths of this organization. And I would be remiss if we didn't highlight and get one.
Figuring that aspect out. Questions? Yes ma'am.
The question I had earlier that I was trying to ask you, because you indicated that you interviewed staff and community members. How many staff did you actually interview? And how many community members? And how were they selected?
They were typically selected by the role and responsibility they had. Critical to the city, the community, the new. Interviewed Pam, thank you. And four of the department leaders interviewed all of those.
So two community members? Correct.
Interviewed 100% of the government, the board, the community, and individuals who the leaders elected officially to live in his community as well. The staff interviewed.
Well, I think that, have you watched any of the previous town halls about the community's concerns? I mean, you're talking a lot about the leadership and the internal, but there's community concerns too. Have you watched any of the previous town halls? You have not? Maybe you should. They're all recorded.
I will say we have.
You have?
We've been in two of your community meetings.
Well, you weren't in the ones that I was in when I was asking questions.
No ma'am, I wasn't. I was online when we presented about a month and a half ago. We were in Tulung. But we're not local. We're from Seattle, DC, and Alabama. And so we dial in, and since they engaged with us back in the end of March, we've been participating in every board meeting that has occurred since that time.
Because like, we have a manor that's not at full capacity. And when someone calls to try to get in the manor, they're told there's no staff. And so we have empty beds that could be benefiting members of our community. And this is an aging community. I know you're not from here, but it is an aging community, and the manor is needed.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I don't like smoking on the news because I'm different.
And maybe you should reach out to a few other community members and find out.
Can I ask a question? I just want to make sure I get the facts right. She said we had, you identified 24 leaders in the organizational chart.
Yes.
And you said 17 of the 24 leaders have three years of less experience, and that we're, we have some deferred maintenance with their education. So it sounds like what you're saying is the whole operational power of the entity depends on just a handful of people. Is that a fair conclusion?
If you look at the back page, remember the back three pages of the organizational chart? And on that organizational chart, there's a year and each individual assumed the role.
So my question is, did I get it right? Is that what you're saying, is we're very thin? We have just a handful of people that really are experienced, that the organization depends on. And we have a lot of people that we could do a lot to build them up. But at this time, that's something that we're not achieving. Is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying. That is what we are saying. And I would even take it one step further. Even those that have been here longer than three years, doesn't mean that they necessarily have the education or training they need to operate at the top level for leadership.
And I think you also said, during my big list, that we're not doing well with succession planning?
Yes, it's true.
You said that.
Any other questions?
I have a question to you about interviewing staff. Because I feel like all of us in the queue here are not good. And that's the only one who's good.
The selection process wasn't ours.
Whose was it?
Let me begin with yours. Selection process is ours. We do a request for interviews that brought to administration. And we're looking for community members during the time that we're there. We're looking for board members, leaders, and staff. We arrive for, I think, four days here, and we pack it in nonstop. I think we divide it and conquer. So the selection wasn't ours.
Do you have a guess? Who was in charge of the selection?
Finish that one. How many staff were interviewed? I guess he didn't actually answer my question on the screen. How many staff members were interviewed?
How many staff members?
No, we've got to look at, look up his numbers.
The question was, who selected the staff to interview?
I believe administration. The administration.
You know, when I finally agree, is you guys saying that we need more services to be able to do more services here? We do. But when we've got a CEO that fires doctors and nurses and things like that, and just keeps running everybody off, I think our first concern here is to get rid of the CEO. And it's sad the board has not done that by now.
How many doctors did you talk to?
How many doctors that we want out?
Yeah.
How many doctors did you talk to? I'm enjoying the doctor.
Excuse me. We have patients down the hall. Could you just ask them to?
I mean, you'd all be in. I mean, even some board members don't even know what's going on. I mean, like, one of them didn't even have any coil. Is that monument health or what's that? So what is she doing on the board?
Well, it's going to change, so thank goodness.
Our job is to provide an operational assessment based on best practices, where you are, snapshot of when we were here, based on the data requests that we got. We put out a lot of data requests. We asked for information, financials, everything we can get our hand on. And we benchmark that against many standards. MGMA, AMA, AHA, all those organizations that are the bellwethers for hospitals, to say where you guys at compared to them. And then from that, we present the report to you all, and try to give you a roadmap on where you want to go. Yes ma'am.
What kind of hospitals did you compare us to?
Critical hospitals.
Great, 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 great question. In the back of your packet, there's every, by only, independent hospital that benchmarks that you have. The data's available for you right there. In addition, there's a group out of Minneapolis that says on the financial side, this is all hospitals across the United States, critical access hospitals. I think like 1,800. And here's where that median is. But that's 2020 data. So please, recognize coming out of COVID, with a lot of COVID funding, probably 2024, 2025, 2026 is when those, that financial side should settle down.
Do you want to answer a question?
In response to yours.
Yes.
The reason I ask that is because we share Epic with Monument. And I didn't know if that was a part that they did or that we did. So that's why I asked that question.
Awesome. So you guys were hired to do an evaluation, correct?
Yes.
So with this evaluation, how come, or who gave you the authority to play interim in positions that are now vacant? And who gave you the authority to put out ads to hire for positions?
So we were hired by the board to fill the vacancies that they had. So for the interim position for their CHRO, the board hired us to provide them an interim. The board hired us to provide a permanent search for the CHRO. And then Mr. Lindauer contacted us when your COO was put on administratively for an interim to be able to cover that position.
Okay, so a question for.
Just for clarification, no we didn't.
The board has nothing to do with the COO.
Not the COO, but the board did hire us for the CHRO and the interim CHRO.
So if you.
And the assessment.
Wait, 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 I'm not finished. So if the board didn't have anything to do with the COO, and you put an interim into the COO position, how can you have someone on admin leave?
Well. Mr. Lindauer?
So if you have someone on admin leave, how can you fill that position with an interim?
You can put them on as an interim chief operating officer.
And how can you put someone in an admin position on admin leave without the board's approval?
Because that would be operations.
No, it's not, that's not in your bylaws. I have your bylaws right here. It's not in your bylaws.
Wrong.
Yes. Well, this is a board question, and you're doing an evaluation.
Yeah.
So I'm asking the board, if you guys have nothing to do with the COO being on admin leave, how can you put the admin, the COO on admin leave without the board's permission? Because in your bylaws, you have to have the board's permission, because she's in an admin position.
My question is, did the board know that the COO is put on admin leave? That's my problem.
That is a problem. Because you're not following your own bylaws. Okay. In your bylaws, section C, select employee and terminate employees, draft and perpetrate personnel rules applicable to all district employees and contractors according to fair labor laws. However, the administrator shall not hire any person for or terminate any member from the administrative team without prior authorization by the board.
Correct. So she's not terminated.
But how can you fill her position with an interim?
And his, the position is not officially filled by the board, because the board hasn't voted on it yet. But Thomas is here in the position, working with the clinic and the other things, until we vote on it, which is going to occur on Monday.
So he came for an assessment, and now he's in the position. That's the first thing. And you're still not answering the question.
Or a hospital, one of these cases.
And we're going to.
You guys are running everybody out there?
We're going to vote on that on Monday? Is that a special meeting that you're calling that you haven't notified?
We didn't talk about it yet.
And Thomas, Thomas went around to all the staff and said that he is serving as an interim COO.
Yes.
So can I make a point that builds on questions I asked you? Just to make sure I understand what you're saying. So if Thomas is the COO interim, then Piper is not. But my question is, you said we have 24 people that run the hospital, 17 of which are not to fault of their own, are inexperienced in those roles, and they need more training. So the bulk of the weight of the operational ability of the hospital is in just a few people's hands. And Piper was one of those people. The timing of her ousting, I think seriously, puts in jeopardy the ability of this hospital to function. Now, I know you may disagree with me on her attributes as a person. I've only met her once, about a year ago. But what I understand from the people in the hospital is Piper wore a lot of hats in this building. And that you said there's not a good succession plan in place. Meaning, there's a handful of people that make the hospital work for all the patients in the community, and we don't have a succession plan. There's not a backup. And you just took one of our most valuable people that served as interim CEO and kept this hospital running for months, and she's gone? And Randy, I hope nothing bad happens to you, but if you had an unfortunate healthcare episode? I just talked to a guy, Nick, last night at the Awana meeting. And he got life flag to rapid today. I spent 10 minutes talking, just like that. He's in intensive care. I don't know if he'll be paralyzed or what's happened to him. We have put this hospital in an extremely vulnerable position by the timing of this move. Piper made things work with Judge. She kept the hospital running when we didn't have a CEO. One day Randy won't be here. So she was really the person we would rely on if anything happened to Randy. And anything could happen to Randy, I hope it doesn't. But if it does, it looks like we're in a very vulnerable spot. And maybe that's the right eventual move? But the timing of it seems like a big mistake.
Well, not just the timing of it. The fact that they were, H&amp;H was brought in to do an evaluation. And now it seems to have stepped to a whole nother level than an evaluation.
And it was done within a four-day snapshot? I don't think, that's a really small timeframe to like, figure this all out. Four days interviewing people.
I just want to go on the record as a board member. I have a gigantic problem with scheduling a special meeting that I just found out about one second ago, on the day before election, when you all, the community, are going to speak on election day on who you want to run this hospital. And we're going to have a special meeting that's uncalled, that I just found out about 10 seconds ago, to possibly terminate one of our long-term employees? It stinks. It stinks.
That's not what we talked about.
You just said it.
What I said was.
You just said it.
That's, that's potential.
Dottie, you're another woman that really needs to go.
Dottie, was everybody aware, I mean, did you know everybody about the special meeting?
We need to let some people speak at the elections.
I think that we need to have a raise of hands, who's here for Piper?
All of us. Every one of us, every single member of us. We have all worked with her.
And you got about 40 more out there.
And one more thing I would like to say. When Kristen Polgar resigned, I watched, I wasn't here, but I watched it. I was so sad. Not one of you, not one of you got up and thanked her for 30 years of service. She worked her butt off at this hospital and the clinic. And not you. You guys didn't even have the guts to stand up and say, "Thank you, Kristen, for everything you've done for us." We should get Shane to do that.
So you guys have elections on Tuesday, and I know there's been a lot of concern in regards to if the election is going to be fixed or not. So I've talked with a couple people, and we've come up with probably a nice solution. And we would like to see if the board would make a motion on this. And that is to have someone that's not affiliated with the hospital to count the votes. Law enforcement, I did talk with Sheriff Polgar today. And he will have one of his deputies transport the ballots from Upton to Newcastle, and if need be, from Osage to Newcastle, to that one person to do the counting.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
I worked very hard on this election. And I worked very hard to get people that would not be, that are impartial. So I want to say that I have, that we have people that are coming in that are not affiliated with the hospital. I have checked with Becky Hadlock, who I'm supposed to report to, on who that I'm going to be having, and she's okay with that. And we do have several people. We even have other people coming in to do it. I have run, I have run, this is my fifth year. It's, this is my fifth year running this. I have never been accused of not running a clean election.
So the motion, I would like to ask the board to please consider, because I'm on the ballot, and I don't want to be on a ballot where I'm already hearing people talking to me, saying, "I don't think this looks right. This doesn't look like it's going to be a fair election," and so on and so forth. So my point is, I'd like to nominate the mayor to be the person who, as I understand it, will. And I also understand it, the person right now is your son.
Listen to me, please. There are eight people that are counting the ballots. I talked to Becky Hadlock, and my son is 28 years old, and he is.
No offense, I'm not implying that there's anything wrong with your son.
He can count, that's why I asked him. He's very good with numbers. I asked two people that are not going to be judges to come in to help count, to make it more fair. We plan to record the entire counting of the board. And this has all been cleared with Becky Hadlock.
Can I ask you a vote? Who are all the people that are coming?
I don't have, so there'll be two people. So the ballots, by the way, cannot be done with just one police officer. It is by law. Two people have to be with those ballots all the time. So two people will come from Upton and bring them here to the hospital. Two people will come from Osage, will bring them here to the hospital. And two people from Newcastle will bring them here to the hospital. And there will be two new people with new sets of eyes that will be able to count. And let me tell you, it is helpful to have those judges there because they know what happened during the day. And they can say, "Oh, this is this, and this is one, and we had this." And I'm not in the room when they are counting. The doors are closed, and no one is allowed in.
Pam, you mentioned that you want no one affiliated with the hospital there at the election?
That was the census of that.
Because we have two board members, one on the canvas and one on the counting.
No, one on the canvas.
No, we don't.
We have nobody affiliated with the hospital at all. My son is my son. I am not on the ballot, people.
That's the only thing I heard.
So I have called it with Becky Hadlock. No, it's not.
For the community's benefit, I have worked with Denise on this, and I have asked a ton of questions. I'm a regular poll watcher, and I have worked on many elections in the past. And I have worked with Denise. I still have more questions, but Denise has always been accommodating and willing to answer those questions. I had a few concerns before, in the very beginning, with the appearance of impropriety. And Denise and I kind of worked and talked together. And Denise has been very, very good about making sure that there is multiple people doing multiple roles. So she's also been very consistent about the people that she's chosen to be election judges and counters. The fact that she's being very transparent and innovative should be noted and appreciated. I will tell you all that on all the poll locations are public. You can go there, and if you have a concern, you can stand there and watch all day. Please do, I encourage you to stand there and watch all day. The counting has to be done per statute in secret. In that sense, is the wrong, is a bad word. But it does have to be done behind closed doors by only the counting board people in the room. And then that is in state statute. I talked with the Secretary of State about this, and we went over some things for the past week as well. I want you all to feel like your vote matters. And I want you all, I want to ask you all to go to the polls and make your voices known. Your vote will be counted, and I will stand behind Denise on that. Ann and I are on the canvassing board. The canvassing board will meet two days later, and they will look at everything the counting board did, and all the reports of everyone, including all of you guys, if you choose to stand at the poll location and observe the whole thing. All your reports will be reviewed by the canvassing board, and the results of all the counting will be reviewed by the. It's me, Ann, and.
We have to change.
Her person.
No.
We have to change.
We don't. The canvassing board has to be members of the body.
What I'm telling you is that other member is not available. So we have to add.
So we all change me and Ann.
No, 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 no. I have to change the other person. Nope, 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 not you guys.
Just for the community to know, Ann and I are on the canvassing board, and we will, our goal, our job afterwards is just to verify all the work that was done by Denise and her team on election days. So there is a check and a double check. And I want you to feel safe going to the polls. And if you have any doubts, please go there and watch. You have every right to. And the canvassing board meeting is going to be the.
The ninth?
The ninth.
At four o'clock.
At four o'clock. And that is a public meeting. So if you would like to come here and listen to our discussions or have us review any reports, that is a public meeting, and you're all welcome to come.
Minutes will be kept from that meeting also, and those will be posted on the website. And it will not just be Carrie and I. There will be somebody else that's not on the board, hopefully not our friend.
No.
The other one was right, because we didn't know her.
So it's, it's a previous campus board member, Georgina Maturi, who said she would do it.
So what I, thank you for talking about this. And please understand, in no way am I insulting the integrity of you or your family. But because people have come to me, and they said, you know, "We all have a bad taste in our mouth with the 2020 presidential election." And so perhaps that's changed our minds on elections and so forth. I think there's. there's still a lot of built-up, bad feelings from that. And of course, in Weston County, it's disproportionately more so than what we would see in the rest of the nation.
From the moment the ballots are made, they are kept under lock and key constantly. And so I make sure that is and that's the way we'll go to the polls.
What I thought would be is to have one trusted elected public official as one of the eight people counting the ballots. So if anybody has any conspiracy theories or questions or things, that there's someone that we all can agree has no conflict of interest, that's trusted by the community, and that if they, if there's any questions, they can come and say, "Pam, what did you think? Did everything look fine?" So that's a, that would be, I think, an improvement to address this concern.
But Denise, is that...
That's not a board decision.
No, that's not a board decision.
That's still not affiliated with West...
Right. And so, Dottie, what I'm saying, that's just a matter of procedure. As I understand the bylaws, the president, you know, latterly, can direct the CEO. And the CEO, of course, can unilaterally direct any member of the state. So what I'm asking you personally is could you make this concession for the community just to address these concerns? It doesn't require a board meeting. You can just lean over and tell Randy, "Let's do this." And Randy can lean over and tell Denise, "Let's do this." And then it will be done.
It's, I gotta...
Yep. So you'll do that?
We have a couple of questions.
I don't have a problem with, with suggesting your suggestions.
Well, I'm not asking a suggestion. I'm asking you publicly if you will just turn to Randy and say, "Randy, I want you to put Pam as one of the eight electors. Tell Denise to do it." And for Randy to look over at Denise and say, "Please make Pam one of the eight electors."
Pam, are you willing to do that?
Yes.
It's a Tuesday night and you need to be here at 6:30, please. Thank you. Free pizza.
Thank you very much.
We eliminated two conversations.
I have another question, too.
Other hands that knew that Piper and Dr. ... Well, Piper, sorry. Piper.
Piper hasn't lost her job.
Well, let's just say, who asked her to leave?
You're on administrative leave.
Why did they resign?
Here's, here's how it works. She's on administrative leave. It is a...
Who all knew that, though? Did all the board members know that she was being put on administrative leave?
They were notified after.
We were notified after, yeah.
That's the same thing.
Is that how you work around here?
That's the way it...
Is that proper for him, for a CEO?
It falls under operations, not government.
Not according to the bylaws. The bylaws say.
Yes, I agree.
So they can't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, finally getting to meet CEO face-to-face since you insisted this is the only way we could talk. I'm here. I guess my first question would be, I seem to hear that these fellows from various parts of the country have been talking to you for months and getting paid to do it. So why wouldn't you have a Zoom or a phone call with me when I asked on December 31st, again on January 26th, again in February, I had Kim reach out and offer to meet with you face-to-face since you insisted that that was the only way it could happen? And you said, "No, I'll wait until Bob gets here face-to-face." Why were you incapable of setting up a phone call or allowing me to set up a phone call or Zoom? Why did you insist that I be here to meet with you face-to-face when you hired all these guys to work remotely?
I didn't hire them. I have not...
Okay, why is it okay for them?
I haven't talked to them for months.
You recommended these people. This is the consulting firm you recommended and sole source contracted.
I recommended them to the board. The board hired them.
So why can't you talk to me?
I, I will talk to you. When do you want to talk?
I've been asking you for months to talk.
Sit down in my office and talk.
No. See, why didn't, why didn't they have to sit in your office?
They have sat in my office many times.
They just told us they're not in the community, that they work from phone and remotely.
They actually, Ann, they talked to me the first time.
To present to the community, to present to Mr. Rendell, his services work, we came here to talk to him.
Okay. Well, let's skip that and, and let's go back because honestly, this one to the board, because it's your responsibility to be responsible for the community. There's several senior citizens who are sitting on floors, out in the hallway. I know people approached you for, for days. You've known this was going to be a big meeting. Why were there not accommodations made for the community, this level of interest that you've got right here? Why are people stacked up in the hallways? Why wasn't a different venue selected for this? You have experts in the building. Why didn't anybody, I know I asked, why didn't anybody do that? Why did you subject these people to this?
There's a big enough conference downstairs. I had just a class down there. I don't know why it wasn't.
Why? Will someone ask, "Madam Chairman, why was this location not moved to accommodate the public?"
This, this location was told to me is the best place to be for the internet access and the Zoom ability.
Yeah, I know. Do people were able to Zoom in. So...
I just did a class down there for our, for school board. Money Zoom, funny internet down there. We didn't have a bed of troubles. So you can't tell me...
I suggest that the boards get together and this needs to be done ASAP and we need to get rid of the CEO. That's what the Weston County residents, voters, taxpayers want. It's him to go down the road.
If I could.
Yep.
Okay, that's hard. And Thomas, I guess I gotta real quick. Do you always talk that slow, dude? Or was that just for today?
That's the way he talks.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I hope they didn't pay you by the hour then. Um, no, no, no. I'm gonna talk. I was, I was told I have to be here to talk. I drove 12 hours. Let me talk.
Excuse me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to limit everybody to a certain timeframe so that we're not all here until midnight. And so we have a rest of our board meeting to finish. So please, make your points and we'll be happy to answer.
I think I'm moving through them pretty quickly, to be honest with you. Okay, so I guess the next point is, and this is my area of expertise, is marketing and communication. So that's where I saw the inconsistencies that I'll actually address. You talk about why the concerns about the election. I think it's general trust issues in the community. Um, and, and I don't think it's actually a reflection on how elections have been run in the past. It's all the inconsistencies and inaccuracies that have been put out to the community. The financials that were put up there, $3.1 million year operating loss, that's exactly what the CEO said was, was unfactual in the newspaper before he let the CFO go. So, and then would not provide any real data to us since then. So why is, why is it okay for that number to be there? You included it in your letter you sent out this week, Leann. Mr. CEO, you made a statement in a board meeting that the hospital could not lose $3 million a year because they wouldn't be able to pay the bills.
That was last year. That was not this year. You were referring to this year's.
So why didn't you make that clarification? You just shut down all the numbers.
This year, we are on approximately $1.8 million loss.
Man, this, now May. Um, okay. So I'll move on to the next one. In the email that I got telling me that the Newsletter Journal's online services were no longer required, the Public Relations and Marketing Director, when I asked why, if there was a problem with the advertising, she said, "No, that the determination had been made that the print was working effectively for you." Yet this entire presentation was about two months worth of social media and internet marketing. So if the experts are saying that that was vital and important information, why was at less than $100 a week, and obviously the community pays attention to what we're putting out. So why was the Newsletter Journal removed from that? And why was I told that the print product is performing, but the online wasn't when the exact opposite was just presented?
We're looking at marketing and media and we have provided you with $147,000 over the several months to the Newsletter Journal. I pulled the invoices yesterday.
$147,000?
Yes.
I need to talk to another accountant.
Well, maybe...
Dude, I don't gross, I don't gross, I don't gross $400,000 a year. How did the hospital...
We did. We did.
I absolutely, that's absolutely false. Over five years, Denise says, over five years. You misstated, Mr. CEO. Uh, okay. So who's been doing, I, I saw the, the numbers on social media. Who's been performing that function for the last two months? What, that have blown up these numbers for you guys? That's pretty impressive. Who's been doing that work?
Uh, our firm has.
You've also been hired then to do what I was fired for, right? Is that correct?
It would appear so.
And how much were you paid for that?
Uh, we charged them $10,000 for three months.
Wow, $5,000 a year for the local guy. Nice effort. Okay, so...
Did you do any Facebook for us?
Yeah, we did. And as a matter of fact, a lot of those neat ideas you had, I sent an email to you several months ago, uh, suggesting, "Hey, you guys are spending these money. We should be celebrating employees online." I sent you a number of different marketing ideas. You never responded to the email, much like the CEO has done with most of the ones I've sent to him. I do have another question about process. We were told repeatedly, and I think a lot of these people were told, that only the chairman can speak to the public or press. Why did this board member send out a letter that was printed in Weston County that? Send it to me, too.
I got permission.
Really? From the chairman? Was that not in the whole board, not the whole, so anybody can call and get permission anytime?
I guess. They can. I did.
What's the use of having bylaws if you can make a phone call to your friend and do whatever you want?
Friend?
Kind of seems like that to me. Okay, um, I'll move on to the next one. You know, and, and I guess, boy, there's, I really haven't gotten a satisfactory answer to anything I've asked. You called me horrible a month ago because of, because of questions I asked you a year ago. Do you remember what that conversation was about as a prior chairman? You, you told this board after I sent the email and you discussed it last month, that your interaction with me was horrible. I went back, looked at those emails again and, and you thanked me. Do you remember what that?
Yeah, you called me and kept me on the phone for about an hour, chewing on my butt.
Wow. And you remember what happened to, to make that phone call happen? I had sent you several emails to the...
I'll tell you what happened. Do you remember what happened? When we did a presentation or a special meeting, our secretary was two hours, I think, late in getting the eight-hour pre-notice.
Wow, you guys like holding special meetings all of a sudden? Yes. The email was sent to us three hours before a special meeting notifying the community. And it was present, I don't believe it was presentations, it was CEO finalist interviews. Um, and it was sent out as, as discussion about a professional person. I guess my whole point being, how much then, when, when you created a marketing and public relations position, how much of a pay increase did that amount to? That position didn't exist. So how much more is, is that position costing the hospital? I heard $10,000 for three months. How much does a marketing and public relations person cost? Did that come with a pay increase?
You know, none of my jobs, none of my, I did not get any jobs added to this. It was what I've been doing.
So there was no pay increase when the title, when this CEO gave you that title? There was no pay increase?
That's personnel.
No, it isn't. Salaries are public. So, and, and don't tell me, your email said that you are watching cost. So if you gave somebody a raise, that's not watching cost. If you pay somebody twice as much for three months as you pay somebody for one year, that's not watching cost. I think the problem with the board is, is that, and, and you talk to two people in the community when I begged you. Why, why, why didn't you tell the consultant, "Boy, that pain in the ass newspaper guy has been emailing me for months. You should ask him about things."
I would not use words like that.
Okay, that pain, you're great. Okay, so...
I do have kids watching this video, so I would rather that you keep your language down.
Okay, I can do that. So the last thing, so, so the last thing. Um, in this one, Ms. Farnsworth, I want to address this to you because you're always very, very quiet in these meetings. You know, the last person that called me, people call me horrible, let's face it. But the last person I remember doing it was the University of Wyoming science professor who 10 years, you gonna roll your eyes at me now? You can pick up a phone and call me when a student was railroaded by a University of Wyoming science professor.
Which was true. What you're publishing in the paper is half-truth. I go to get the paper and it's like, what?
Well, nobody will talk to me, tell me what the truth is. Why didn't you, what I'm saying is, you had no problem picking up the phone and sickling me on the University of Wyoming. Why don't you pick up the phone and call me in this position?
It was, yes, principal that picked up the phone and called you.
I talked to you while I was, anyway. You know, it, it's, it's great when I'm fighting for the community and for you and, but when I point the finger at you, you don't like it.
And I'm just trash dissing the paper this week and it's like, what?
Wait, I didn't, how?
I have not been on the board four years. I've been on the board two and a half years. And let's see, what else? Let's see. Or the article where Dottie's looking at her phone, ignoring somebody. Dottie's looking at the document. You take things and you take them out of context.
Well, when nobody will talk to me, I've gotta report what I can report.
I only wanted to be on this board for this hospital. It's betterment.
And I think everybody, I think everybody does.
Do they? Everybody complains and look at where we're at.
No, the problem is, is that everybody is here for the board's benefit. No, the problem is, is that everybody is here for the board's benefit. But the problem is, is this particular board, and particularly the leaders of it, have developed a messiah complex. You think you are the only ones who can save the hospital and so you shut the community. Why do I keep getting interrupted?
That's why we want our people to be happy.
So you shut the community out.
No, I'm still talking.
Wrap it up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up by this. The problem being, the reason that you have no connection to your community whatsoever, is because this board chose to make as a chairman someone who wasn't elected, someone who was appointed by this board. This basically means your president and three people chose the chairman of this board. There's no connection to the community there. The CEO that you then hired wasn't even your first choice. It was number two. And despite that, you've spent the last few months acting like you've got some kind of mandate. You have no mandate. You need to work with the community to do everything. You weren't voted in. Number two wasn't even chosen. He fell into the job.
Well, I didn't fall.
And, and so you need, you need to involve the community.
I mean, if any CEO wants to fall in, they can.
And my last thing is really, you know what? You said people are gonna vote with their keys. I think people are gonna vote with their votes. And I hope they do. And thank you, Weston County, for showing up tonight. Because this, this has been an example of bad government. This, this consulting thing, I don't know how much money you guys are making now. You got an original contract of under $50,000 and now you've, you've assumed I don't know how many other positions. All, and most of it without board votes, without bids.
Okay, Bob, thank you for your, thank you for your comment.
I hope it helps you sell more newspapers.
One comment.
Who said that? Really? I sell 1,500 newspapers a week.
I know. And you're really upset that you lost this accountant. That's why you're attacking me.
Wait, oh, no, no. Hey, now, he, no, no, I get to keep speaking because he addressed me. He addressed me, so I get to keep speaking. No, where are you going, dude?
Come on back, buddy.
Yeah.
Don't be a chicken.
We gotta go back here once, once.
All right, let's, let's move on.
Bob, wow. If you're staying for tomorrow, come to my office. I'll be glad to.
I don't owe you anything. I tried to talk to you. I hope these people fire you. I don't wanna be your friend.
Excuse me, sir.
Hi. So I'm, I'm here because we all want the hospital to do well and be steech. And so Dottie and Leann and Nick and Jamie and Randy, when Maureen left, so, and just so the consultants know if they're still here. So I, I was a CPA and auditor. As soon as Maureen left, she's who made the accounting system. The second she left, it broke. And then the longer she was gone and someone wasn't replaced, it's just gotten worse and worse, of course. My sense is that Piper wore lots of hats in this hospital, that she's an ultra valuable person and that we don't have to pick between Randy and what all he can give us and Piper. And that I want you to know that the authority is totally in your hands. So the, the bylaws mention that you have all the power according to the Wyoming statutes. And so I printed off the statutes and I'll just mention this for reference. I, I'm just trying to beset you, to, to be merciful and look for a way to reconcile things. If there was a dust-up between Piper and, and Randy, I understand.
Well, let me stop you there. This is not a personal issue. It's a personnel issue. Okay, so go ahead.
What, what I'm trying to say is, just as a matter of fact, it's been stated that it's not a decision that's in the board's hands, that it's properly taken from the board. So the Wyoming statutes cut through that and it says this in section 188104 subsection 8. Says, "The management and the control of the hospital shall be by a board of trustees composed of at least five, but not more than 11 people." I think what the community is here trying to say is as a community, we're looking at this choice... I think what the community is here trying to say is, as a community, we're looking at this choice, and we just really disagree. We should be able to have Piper and Randy because Piper was here with Maureen. She kept the hospital running when we had no CEO. She made it work with Judd. And one day, Randy will not be here. I hope he's, you know, not, that anything bad happens to him. But that's the nature of CEOs in this hospital, that they come and go. And the spirit of the bylaw is the administrative team are all the people who can make the hospital work in a stable way. The consultants told us, there's 24 leaders in the hospital, 17 are, are green around the gills. And so the weight of making everything work, there's just a few people that can make everything work. And Piper certainly was one of those people. I, as the board, you can override any decision. The bylaws do not limit your power. You have all the power. And I just would like you to think, it is a very destabilizing. If anything would happen to Randy, we have a brand-new interim COO who, who, no offense to him, I know he has a great resume and everything, but he's just fighting the paper clips at this point. We relied on Piper when Maureen was gone. She is somebody that you should be able to retrain. I think we should have a culture where we grow our own people. And if, if there's something of a training issue or something, I think as a board, if I was on the board, I'd say, Randy and Piper, let's sit down and let's work this out. We want both of you, we're better off with both of you than one of you. We shouldn't have to pick. I think it's a big mistake. It threatens the stability of the hospital. And so when you go into executive session, I don't know what you'll discuss. I just want you to know that the power of the hospital to manage and govern is with the board. And, and so please, please reconsider.
And we understand that. But you have to, you have to understand and trust.
I don't mean any disrespect from this, but, uh, I would like to suggest that, just, just for the looks of it, that whose ever counting ballots is not related to anybody involved in the hospital. I just don't think I listen to them. For on their part, not, and I think they're probably the most honest people. I don't want to give them off. And the other thing I'd like to say, just real quick, is, you know, you, you gentlemen came to town, and I hope you realize this is not a very big city. And I've lived here for 76 years and, uh, but know many people here. You can't just go everywhere and get somebody, you know, to, to hire. And then all that we've seen as the public is basically you getting rid of people here at the hospital, not that some of them don't need to go, but you're trying to get rid of some of the best people you have. And, uh, that, that something, something's fishy, something's real fishy with that. And that's how we feel.
Back to you, and I won't take much time. Piper was put on administrative leave. She was not terminated. She's not terminated now. I was hired as the CEO. I came out of retirement. I wasn't looking for a job. They called me. I found this city to be very generous, very kind. And that's where I want to live. And whether I'm working here, whether I'm not working here. But if we don't make changes now, not saying in personnel, but if we don't make changes by offering new service lines, growing those service lines and growing revenues, we're not going to be around in 12 months. We're not. We have $6 million in reserves. We have a $2.2 million payroll every two weeks. So we have to make changes. People don't like change, but we have to. I told Piper from the beginning when I met her, she was a very intelligent woman. And you can ask that of any people around that. I have told her, she's a very intelligent woman. She is on administrative leave right now. As far as terminating providers, we have not, I have not terminated any providers. None whatsoever.
Right, but the point I want to make is when Maureen left, the accounting system broke. And we couldn't really tell for a while, and now we really can tell. And really going back. Could I finish my point? My, my sense is that the longer Piper is out of the building, that there has been a misunderstanding and underappreciation of all that she did and the value that she provides. Did you know she's a really good nurse? And she's come out of her office several times to fill gaps? Thomas, you know, I don't think you're a nurse. My point is, we have to have efficiency, output over input. And what we need are flexible people who can wear lots of different hats. And I cannot believe that Piper can't be retrained, reeducated to fit whatever scheme it is you want to drive towards. And I, if I was on the board, I would, I would just not approve this. I'd say, we've gotta work this out, Randy. And we want to hear what you have to say. Piper knows a lot about how things work. Sit them down and work this out. Piper is someone we should grow and invest in. We just heard from the consultants, we need to invest in our people. She's one of the best people we've had. We have relied heavily on her. And the longer she's on administrative leave, she'll have to look for a job. And when she takes a new job, she's gone. And if something unfortunate would happen to Randy, if Randy would have a stroke and Piper takes a new job, as they said, there is no good succession plan. We're dead in the water. And this is a big danger.
We hear you hang on, Pam. Excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off. Are you okay? Joyce?
I would like to clarify an issue about our accounting. I work in the business office. I work in the business office.
Okay.
Our last CFO resigned six years ago. The board at the time did not want to spend the money on the salary for another CFO. So they hired someone with an accounting background, not in medical, who did not know how to do the job. When she retired, they hired someone else to do the same thing.
I totally believe you. But when I first got here, Piper asked me to come meet her in the interim period to ask if I would help with the accounting situation. And she showed me the financial reports. And they were voluminous and detailed. They broke down the segments so that we could tell, are we making money in the clinic? Are we making money with inpatient services? How about the ED? How about the pharmacy? There's no longer that level of detail. And so whatever Maureen was doing, it was pretty good. It was enough to make good decisions with. We, now we just get an oral report, which is something we can kind of bump along with. My point is that, my sense is, it is an enormous mistake from the board that Piper could be retrained. She is a smart person. She is exactly the kind of person we cannot lose. We need to grow our own in this community. And the whole, all the kids in the high school who want to be doctors and nurses and techs and these things, they want to look at this hospital and say, I want to go, go to college, get my training, get my experience, and come back here because we value people that are in the high school hall of fame.
Right.
I, it is a huge mistake to, to let this go on. And, and Randy, I know you've got a plan.
Right.
Could you have a different playbook?
But you're right, because for over 15 years, nobody took charge to mentor the current employees or the past employees into positions and get them educated to where they can grow within this organization. That should have happened 15 years ago. That is what we're pushing now, to mentor and grow the employees we have.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to say is, what the consultant said is 17 of the 24 leaders are green around the gills. They're, they're not people we can depend on in a crisis if, if something happens to Randy. So Piper is a person that we were relying heavily on. She made everything work. I'm just telling you, the, the decision is in the board's hands.
Thank you, Nathan. Pam, you're next.
Okay, so when the elections are on the 7th, when will the new, um, or when will those people take their seats?
According to the bylaws, um, after their, after, after the 9th, when the final word is done on the 4th, it's the next board meeting, which is the following Thursday.
Okay. So, and then, um, the boards that are, that's here now, how many of them have taken the public officer training? Have you all had?
We all have.
Okay. Uh, cause I think one of the biggest issues is, it seems like there's a lot of miscommunication on your board, which has a lot of untrust, which is trickling down to this community. So I think the biggest thing that you guys do, besides, once you have, you're filling your seats, is be on the same page, in the same book, on the same shelf. Because it's gonna just not get any better if we can't even trust our teammates on the same board.
Right. I agree. Uh, Chris?
I think that Mr. Ballard has spoken very well for Piper. I would encourage you also, as a board, knowing that there is an election on Tuesday, to not make a bad decision or a lasting decision on something like that, knowing that potentially you have two to four new board members and new opinions coming the following day.
Correct. Thank you. John?
So, first, I, I want to say that I, there's a lot of hospital members here that I personally, um, in years or past, have had to build a relationship with. And I really appreciate the relationship that I have with a lot of them now. Holly, Angie, there's just been a lot of, I just really think there's a good staff here, probably one of the better staffs. Um, I also, I don't, I'm not here every day, so I don't know the details of Piper, but I know every time I've interacted with her, she's been awesome. Uh, and I've, you know, I've expressed that. But I, I, I would encourage this whole group to remember why these people came. They weren't, it wasn't something they just came and said, I'm doing this. That they were asked by this board, and remember that the 7th is election day. Let your votes do the talking because what we're getting into now is, is, is even more negative. Not that it's not valid, maybe some of it's very valid, maybe some of it's, you know, there, there, we're not here every day to see that. But I think that, um, if we give the, the voters the chance to speak, the changes will come on their own. But the other thing I want to say is, I like Maureen too. I dealt with her, talked with her. She was really great to talk to. But if I'm wrong, the history that they've come up with, this problem goes back further than two-year board members. It goes back further than those things. And if you keep on doing what you've always done, and I don't think this is the staff's fault. It is up to the board. I've said it before, hold the board's accountable. I'm on one. Look at the, the person's performance record and go, okay, what did they vote for? What did they do? Uh, and that's how you make your determinations. Just saying from a guy that's actually up for reelection. If you keep your word and you are transparent, all of this stuff back and forth between the board member isn't gonna get the problem solved. We do have to make changes at the hospital, whether it's Randy, whether, I, I got into a huge fight, as some of you might know, with Judd when he first got here. Uh, I own a facility which had a very bad reputation. And there, those rumors fly around, not only down here, but they fly around up there. In order to make change, change is hard. But the great thing about change is you can always change it back to what did work and what didn't work. Um, you can do that. And I've seen a huge difference with the staff down here. So I commend the staff, by the way. The nurses station, um, has been great to work for, uh, talk to. And we've tried, we're not perfect. Nobody's perfect. But let your voting do the talking on what you want done. And I think you'll get a better result than, it's not gonna change the past at this point. Um, we could go back on past issues, but that's not gonna change it.
Thank you, John. Dr. Reimer?
I just want to say, today they presented their thing to the med staff. And I was harder on, or as hard on these folks as y'all were. I just asked Thomas, they, he's leaving like tonight or tomorrow. He's not in this position more than whatever it was a short time.
Right, and, and.
Maybe, maybe you need to clarify that, but I, there's been implication, implication that like, who's here?
To clarify, Randy asked Thomas to do this until we have the chance of the board to vote on it. I mentioned Monday because it's something I was gonna bring up later in the meeting when we were done the public part. It's not written in stone, it's not set up. It's just something we need to talk about. But, um, so that's, that's how those things happen. Pam? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Franklin?
You know, I've worked with Piper for 22 years if she's been here. I've always found her to be very professional and helpful. Whenever I ask her something, she knows the answer. And if she doesn't, she does it very shortly. And I think that's the experience of probably everyone in the hospital that's worked with her. I guess the question that most of us have is, is there really a legitimate reason she's been put on leave?
Well, all I can tell you is, is that we can't discuss it because it's personnel. However, again, I would say trust.
Well, it's kind of hard to say.
I understand that. But, but see, all I want to say is, is sometimes, you know, people make assumptions. People think they know, they don't. So, and, and unfortunate part of it, and the thing that drives us all crazy is we can't talk about, according to Wyoming law.
And sometimes that's an easy excuse to hide mine also.
Yeah, it is what it isn't. I can, I can tell you, but go ahead.
The other question I have is in the hospital. I think so many employees are worried about the, the lack of transparency, the fear of retaliation. And what's the plans for dealing with all that?
Well, you want to talk to that?
I have not seen any retaliation. Every time I walk around, I walk over to long-term care, everybody's happy, the patients are happy. By going to patient reach, they're happy. I, I, I don't see the negativity. I don't see.
Most of the staff are feeling that.
I talked with the staff.
So do I.
And why do they tell us they can't say anything from your orders?
From his orders?
Yep.
I mean, everybody has a prerogative. I mean, they really do. It is my duty and under oath to keep this organization open from a compliance standpoint and keep it running. If not, not only the state board of health, the officers, the general, uh, everybody else can come in and shut this organization out. So it's my duty to keep this organization in compliance. And that's not an easy job.
Thomas?
Dr. Franklin, you asked a great question. And, and the answer is, I think you're seeing that demonstrated today, that there's complete transparency of everything that, that we've talked about. We may disagree on how things came to be. We didn't talk with 100% of the people. With 100% of the people we did talk about, those responses are up there. Um, I invite you to read the entire report. I think it shows good faith efforts on this governing board's part to say, would you please do an assessment? Will you please present this assessment in an open forum? Will you please take the slings and arrows from having it in an open forum, as it should? I think that demonstrates a level of transparency. I can't speak to whether that was done before, but I think today speaks to it. Thank you.
He has a question. Yes, sir.
You want to talk about trust and conspiracy, conspiracy? And you just throw onto it that you're having a special board meeting on Monday to vote?
No, I said that, that it's something that I've had, that we talked about, that I need to talk to the board about.
So who's we talking about?
It's not written in stone. It's something that was talked about as a potential for Monday to cover some issues that can't be covered in this meeting. However, we haven't voted on it yet, so it's tentative.
In that meeting, are you gonna vote on personnel?
Vote on personnel.
Since you can't talk about it, are you gonna? You just said sprung upon, and I think everyone's here in agreeance. Would not look good for transparency and trust if you have a special meeting on Monday and you vote, terminate that person the day before an election. And I think everybody's consensus is, as a board, I would suggest not doing that. I would hold off until I've proven the officers.
Right, and, and if we talk about personnel on Monday, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're talking about what you're alluding to?
I understand that, but it's also the trust and the thing. I mean, everyone knows what's going on here. If you have a special meeting on Monday, you're gonna put two and two together. That's four. We don't know what you're gonna be talking about.
We'll find out when the paper comes out next week. Cheers.
I'm on it.
Oh, wait, no. There's not a paper. I forgot.
The paper still comes out.
Just so the board knows, as well as the community, even though that the, the hospital board has bylaws, so does the state. And the Wyoming state statute 18 dash 8 dash 104, hospital generally under control of a board of trustees, appointment, powers and duties of trustees, incorporation, use of funds for, um, of hospitals, term of lease, consolidation of hospitals, acquisitions of land, removal of board member, and filing of vacancies. And then if you go down to, uh, E, the county commissioners. So Commissioner Taylor, uh, may remove any member of the board of trustees for just cause without a public hearing unless the trustees request a public hearing. Vacancies on the Board of Trustees shall be filled by the county commissioners for the balance of the unexpired term created by the vacancies.
Pam? This is our attorney, she has something to say.
Yes.
Allison?
Is this applicable to hospital districts?
The statute's not applicable to hospital districts.
Well, I pay taxes.
And I pay library board. Okay. Are there any more comments or questions?
Statutes about hospitals.
I guess I would just go free.
Go ahead.
You know, the appearance, that you all don't want to be the old model, you all will talk to anybody in our town about things as a board member.
Lanny, sir, I can't hear you. Excuse me.
I said the appearance, if it's not an appearance, then it is written down.
Excuse me, Mr. Curly, Dr. Reimer speaking.
Yes.
That's okay, go ahead, sir.
Whether you do have this in your bylaws, or you have a new thing, you haven't told the medical staff, by the way, and...
We don't have a new thing.
What's wrong with the old way that you can talk to board members? Now, they can't tell you what the decision is, because the decision is the board, but this disappearance of a new change and limit, nobody can talk to anybody, it's not right, and you shouldn't do it, I don't think, even if it's legal for you to do it, okay? And I think those several, several brains, just like we do take care of patients, several brains thinking about the problem, solves it better than one.
Can you, can you? Can you define what you're talking about, you can't talk to anybody?
I can talk to people, I, I thank you all, I haven't really lately, but I know that other people in the community have not been able to talk to you, because, oh, you have to talk to Randy, oh, you have to talk to the secretary, okay? Does anybody have that? If I'm wrong?
Dr. Reimer, you can talk to... You can talk to any board member and...
Present that, that you don't have a new thing that's...
No, there is no new thing.
Their buzz is out there.
But, you know, that goes along with, I don't know how many times I've said, "If you have a question, call me," nobody calls me. You know, I will tell you the truth.
I did.
You did.
And I didn't get an answer.
But you did, you did get a call from the person you were supposed to.
Who gave me no, no response.
Right. So, Louis charged $14,000 the second time for the person I was an executive for. I paid the bill in August, I just got a bill for $14,000. There's definitely some accounting problems. So, to make that clear, this, this young lady came to me, I gave it to Sandy, who's in charge of the accounting department, who called her back, and then hasn't followed up with it, and Louis gave it to Joyce, so just so you understand that news.
Do you know that Piper's the one that changed a lot of those charges on the bills?
Sure. She had a ministry leave, we don't know why. Does anybody else have any comments or concerns? Before we move on?
Angie, you had your hand up before, did you start?
Did you have something here?
No, I just had a question that...
Go ahead.
Some of the employees have asked, because they were scared to ask. So Randy mentioned that he didn't apply for this job, that he didn't want this job, and...
No, I did say I didn't want the job, I applied.
He did apply for the job.
You said you fell into it, or however reported, that you come out to retirement, and the impression was that they sought you out, but not that you applied for it, I looked at it.
He did, he did apply the first time.
I did apply the first time, and then I was out of the running, so I left it alone. Then they contacted me, I didn't contact them, they contacted me.
But you applied for it initially?
Eventually, yes, I did, but I was, I was not chosen, so I went home to retire, and then they called me.
That just wasn't clear the first time, and it's not they contacted you, you didn't apply for it. Are you going to go home and retire, maybe after this?
He was one of the 40.
Are you going to go home and retire after this?
Well, I'll have to go off the main strip and retire, yes, and I'll call my...
You retire and resign.
Well, that's good.
So Kristen, he was one of the 40 applicants we got when we were looking for the CEO.
And you, I mean, you can hire any CEO, but they're going to come in, and they're going to do their own assessment, and they're going to do the same thing. They're going to look at finances, they're going to look at everything that I looked at, and they're probably going to do the same thing. It's just a way of life with new healthcare. You've got to train, you've got to mentor, you've got to grow the people you have.
Should you comply?
Can I just make a comment, finally?
Go ahead.
This whole thing's not a bad thing, I don't look at this as a detriment, you have to have these conversations, you have to have them if you want your organization to grow, and I've been in situations where these conversations turned into they were fruitful. I don't know where this is going to go, but it's got to happen, because now we're addressing things, we're bringing things up to the surface that need to be addressed. I worry, how are we, how are we going to move forward with that? I know the situation with Piper is, is like, everybody's here, we're going to listen to that in executive, I still don't know 100% either, so that's what we're, that's what we're here for. But regarding the culture of this place, I, what Nathan said about growing our own, we have got, that's got to be our culture moving forward.
Trust?
Trust has to happen with us. Now, the election's looming, that's going to, everything in a week from now is going to be totally different. How will we, as a board, operate? Will we have trust? Can you let go of your issues you have with other people? Is that something that us adults, because kids are looking at us, my students, we talk about this stuff all the time. When you guys get to board positions, can you let go of your emotions, and can you let go of the issues you have with other people to make decisions that make this hospital or this organization move forward? That's what we have to do as a board, and that's a call to arms for all of us, to let go. Just because you got slighted at one point, and that's all of us, doesn't mean that you hold that grudge, you move on and we make decisions based on this. That's got to trickle down to everybody else, because from my understanding, and I've been here long enough, two years, don't know a lot about everything, I'm still learning, got a lot to learn, but that's got to trickle down into the admin team. Let go of whatever it is that somebody hurts your feelings, we can't have whispering and behind closed doors, it's got to be like this, and it stings and it hurts, and it's got to, that's the only way that we're ever going to move forward. I can say that all I want, is if we don't have action, it's going to be more of the same. It's just a kumbaya speech I'm making right now. But it's got to happen, and it's right now, what I'm hearing is communication, communication has been banging the drum on that forever. Nobody knows, and Lanny's had to clarify a couple things just by asking the right questions, so as a board member, I got to be better about asking the right questions, so we can get that out to the public. I don't know what else, I wrote a bunch of notes. I've noted everything that everybody said here. There are inaccuracies in the paper's reporting, and that's just part of it. I want to work with Bob, I don't know where Bob went, Bob's angry right now, but understandable, but I would like to work with Bob. I wanted to call Bob multiple times, I wanted to have that conversation, not so he can tell us what, you know, tell the public everything that we want him to, but more importantly, just have a relationship with him so he can get out.
Here he comes.
Well, that's it, I'm just saying, it's just more than anything, more than anything, it's just how do we open up that communication where we can communicate in a way, where we can have these honest conversations? So, what you're reporting is not a factual, I'm just telling you that from, from somebody that's in the room. But how do we open up that relationship again where there is trust among us? It's not going to happen overnight, but it's got to happen, and can't, we can't drive on anger or emotion, we've got to move forward and try to rectify this. It's not going to be good all the time, but how do we do that where we can act like professionals, all of us? That's all I'm asking. So, end of, no, no, it's not, it's just a statement, how do you, no, I was just, I just was saying, I would like to have that, where we have that communication again, I would like that. I wanted to reach out to you a couple times, I just, I just didn't know where that would lead to, and as a new board member, I guess maybe that's what I'm learning, is maybe reach out and then just get clarification on things.
I'd like to answer that question.
Okay, well, his hand's been up.
I just got a couple questions, I might have missed it from the beginning, it's more for you guys. How long have you guys been in business, H&amp;H?
We've been doing healthcare consulting for the last few years.
H&amp;H?
Together, we've, six months.
Okay. How many other hospitals this size have you assessed?
This size?
This size. The size, all of them, so meaning 12.
Okay.
And they're all medical access hospitals.
When you do an assessment, do you assess from the top down?
Within L.
Okay, so how come the CEO wasn't assessing?
How does part of the administration upset the leadership executive session?
Because I seen that in the, whatever you sent out to the public, that the CEO was not assessed.
I don't like your talking.
So, in answer to your question, Nick, one, yeah, I did lose my temper in here, I apologize for that, you guys know me, I get angry. You know, and that's why I have such a problem with whatever the governance document that you guys passed was, because board members that I call say, "I'm not allowed to talk to you." Anything that you, anything that you approve that tells elected officials that they can't talk to the press or the public, that's empowering one person way, way too much, and so that communication broke down, because you guys felt like you couldn't talk to me. I'm, seriously, and, sorry, Leanne, I actually thought that hour-long conversation was pretty pleasant, I thought we talked about a lot of different things, I'm sorry you were...
It sounded pleasant.
No, it didn't, but I thought it became pleasant, I'm, I'm very surprised to hear that it was horrible. At the end, because I didn't write about the meeting that was truly illegal, the special notice went out three hours before, and in the law, which is, at a minimum, requires aid, and really, you should do 24 or 48 to show respect to your community, it's a real emergency. But I didn't write about that, I didn't drag the hospital through the mud, I called, and I talked to you, and I worked it out, but then a year later, I heard I was horrible for doing that.
I felt, I felt like you were pretty, pretty well.
Well, you're trying to back, well, I mean, we got to kind of put our pants on and do these jobs, and, well, all of us, I've been on the board.
It's pretty brutal sometimes.
Well, okay, I get, but you just said it started brutal, but backed off, and actually the email was pretty brutal, said you broke the law, you need to call me and straighten this out, and then we talked for an hour, so, so yes, I've been, I've been brutal to Pam, I've been brutal to Don, I've been really brutal to William over the years.
I heard about that.
That's, that's sort of, well, not sort of, that's my job, someone's got to do that, and I don't want to be combative with anybody, but to be honest, I thought I wrote a very flattering story about Ms. Briggs becoming the chairperson.
You did.
Yeah, but you know what, Bob, I haven't heard from you since July.
Now, you just called, what did I lie about? Ms. Briggs?
I said since July.
I've said, I've said emails, you have, why, why do I have to make all the phone calls? And why, if I turn on a meeting, I don't watch all the meetings, I don't want to do that, I have other things to do, but I turn one on to hear that I lied, that I got it wrong? To be quite honest, and I'll just tell you this, my perception, when the new CEO would not answer me, and then insisted that he had to speak to me in person, ask me where I was from, ask all my reporters where they're from, he definitely, he definitely exhibited a posture of having been told, "The newspaper's a problem and you need to handle it." That was the posture that I received.
That's not the truth. I and I offered to fly down to Durango and meet you in person.
And I told you...
At my expense. No, you didn't tell me that.
I did, I said I'd be glad, the first line of the email is...
You said you would be in town.
I said I would buy you dinner and a beer if you came to Durango.
I don't drink beer, but I will fly down and meet you.
So, no, I, I mean, Nick asked me a question, pick up the phone is the answer. Don't tell me I have to drive up here, tell me you're going to fly down. I, I really, Nick, pick it up any time, and I'd love to talk to you.
Also, Bob, if you put my name in, in an editorial, and then also in a story, it wasn't anything, I didn't mind that. The problem is, I didn't get any, you can't reach out, I know that is journalism, you can reach out to, to other people. When you put someone's name in a story, I mean, that would probably, I would assume that would be good, not say good journalism, but at least the right move.
The editorial I wrote about.
Yeah, and I just, I'm saying, it would be nice to have that conversation, because you put it in there, and I had no idea, like, that kind of created a little tension, and it wasn't, I didn't really, I don't know.
It was an attaboy, quite honestly.
No, I get it, no, I get it, but I'm saying, like, a conversation would be good to have, as I'm saying, to reach out to us, it goes both ways. Because then it's a guessing game, and then it's like, oh, Bob's mad about something.
But, but I do, if I could just respond to that, I did sit with you guys for a half hour in a meeting, and told you all, "Please call me if there's any clarification, anything." I did not receive a single phone call, with the exception, if people asked why I called Carrie, she returned my calls, she returned my emails. That's the only person who reached out to me. So guys, if you would like me to try again, I will certainly do, I, I'm all about moving forward. An answer to your question, Nick, I will, and you're the first guy I'm going to call, dude.
Fair, I'm not saying...
And Jamie, I'm sorry I went after you too, but I really, I, you guys all know me, y'all have my phone numbers, same one it's been for years. And quite honestly, a couple of your emails don't work, my reporters tried, your department, your hospital emails, Nick, you, and Jamie, I believe, those get bounced.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
It is, it is a board rule that the chair speaks to the media for the board. It doesn't mean that you can't talk to the board, it's just about board issues.
No, I can talk to any board member.
That's what I'm saying, that's not what the rules say, and that's what the issue is.
Well, it's fine. So I've been reading the bylaws in anticipation of the election, just to educate myself.
Yep.
I do see that it says the president is the primary liaison with the legal team, and with the CEO.
And the media.
I don't see that in the bylaws. Could you please show me in the bylaws where it says that?
Says what?
Where it says you're the primary liaison to the media. I, I see it says that you are with the legal counsel and with the CEO, but I haven't seen that, and I was just wondering if you could tell me which section of the bylaws it's in.
I can tell you it's in the standard rules for the hospital board. It just, it's just across the board standard, that the chair speaks to board issues by the chair, to the media, legal liaison, and CEO.
That's not in the bylaws, that I can see, and if it is, please show me and educate me. The other point I wanted to make, that I think the docs haven't been connected with the consultants, so we have to drive volume through the hospital for us to stay open? I've had people in the community tell me, they don't want to come here anymore.
Why?
Well, the billing gets messed up, the person that talked to me is, I can't remember the figure, but the billing gets messed up, and then when it goes to radiology, they mess it all up. I've had a lot of people talk to me, and the, the community is here to say one message to you, they are heavily disgruntled with the hospital.
And it would have been interesting to see how many votes may have changed because of Gordon's actions, because of the response of their communities after those bills were passed, specifically the gun-free zone bill. I think that, I think that we would have very much seen a change in votes on that one. I think you would have seen more nay votes on that than you had before.
Are, so you're saying that, that some folks were counting on the governor veto in that one?
I very much 100% think that especially school districts, courthouses, places like that, were banking that the governor was going to go, "No way are we letting guns in these areas." And I think that their response afterwards may or may not have swayed some of those representatives and senators to vote a different way, because the response was strong.
And the, the community is here to say one message to you, they are heavily disgruntled with the hospital, and you can't add services and fix it. There's only 6,600 people in Weston County that are going to come here. The way to drive volume back into the hospital is to listen to these people, and listen to their grievances, and become a hospital that deserves the community to want to come here. That's how you fix your, your patient volume problem fundamentally, so I wanted to connect those docs. And I imagine the public session is probably nearing the end, because we, we don't want to be here. I just wanted to address each individual board member, and say, the bylaws say the board, a majority of the board can amend the bylaws, which means the bylaws cannot be used in any form of argument that says the board's power is constrained by the bylaws, and the board has to obey the bylaws. No, the board can change them. The bylaws don't serve to limit the power of the board, they serve to limit the power of, in particular, the CEO. So do not accept any arguments from the consultants or anybody else that you're handcuffed to the bylaws, because you can amend them and change them. You have broad powers, that's, that's a specious argument, it looks right on the surface, but it's actually not true. The board can change the bylaws, which means they don't restrict what you can do. They do restrict...
We've changed it in the past.
All right, I think...
Mr. Curly, make it one of the...
I think I'm gonna do everyone a favor and not comment, I think the right issues have been brought up tonight and I'll shut up.
Can I just add one thing to what Nate and Nathan have said? We don't ever see this kind of a crowd at a board meeting. We don't ever hear these issues that people have brought to us today besides the Piper issue. So I would encourage the community to spend more time to come to the board meetings and tell us what you like and you don't like, and help us out.
I actually watched the newsletter journals recap.
I didn't realize the public could come. Oh, absolutely. And, and just like I said, well, maybe we'll fix this problem now with Bob, that, that, that things are accurate, that would be awesome.
And that's the thing I wanna, I wanna say is, if there's ever inaccuracies in the paper, don't just talk about it amongst yourselves, you need to make clarifications.
I called you.
Me?
Yeah, we talked about it when I said, I took out the paper and think, wow, good article about the hospital, and I get halfway down, it's like, what?
You didn't give me specifics.
I did, I gave you specifics about. I did, and we talked about it, and I gave you the specifics about her baby used to be born, and she was walking on the phone.
That was the incident, yeah.
And then we talked about the reporters, said, don't live here.
Okay, somebody else wants to.
Go ahead, the chair.
Well, I think as we move forward and with your statement, we need to continue the town hall meetings done at the senior senate that involve not only the boardmen, but the physicians and the leadership. And that is the only way we're gonna be able to hear all the public, because we know all the people within the community cannot fit in this room or even downstairs to be able to speak and have room temperature that accommodates people that have hot flashes or that are cold. So I think in the future, near future, we need to have these forums in order to address some of these issues.
Sorry, this.
I'm sorry, so I just have a couple of questions. One is, the board members are all public servants, correct? So no one should ever feel like they should not go to a board member and speak to them about things that are going on at Weston County Health Services without validation, correct? I just wanna put that out there. Number two, my other question is, who else in this facility holds the long-term care administrator's license? Is it only Piper?
Right now.
Because a little bit ago, you said you held one.
Not in Iowa.
No, no, Iowa, okay. So that's a clarification, I'm just curious as to who else holds the license.
Wait, I don't want, you can talk to that.
So if Piper's on administrative leave, are you using her license while she's on administrative leave?
Yeah, and she knows, and she knows that, and she knows that, that is in the administrative leave documents.
And she talked to an employee, she had a question about patient quality of care. She'd been instructed not to talk to any people in the institution?
That's from the legal issue, yes.
So she's not allowed to return to the building?
How then does your licensed administrator have the quality issue that pops up?
She can talk to HR.
If Piper is not allowed to return to the building, how can you utilize her license?
Exactly. Side phone.
My phone is through HR.
I don't think you should be allowed to use her license if she's not here.
How is that, how is that not breaking HIPAA if HR, everything has to run through HR? Shouldn't that be between your DON at the manor and your administrator at the manor?
There's no HIPAA violation.
Just so the board knows, if something happened, residents, the hospital is liable for all the lawsuits and the finances of the lawsuits, why the CEO can walk away.
She's the director of the manor.
And that wouldn't violate a contract that Piper was given?
And she, that, Melissa needs to speak to Piper.
I need to talk to you.
I would like to make one observation here.
Okay, sure.
My father was the chairman of the first board that built the hospital on the hill. And the contention in the community was just about equal to what it is now.
Well, that's comforting.
I remember that seventy-seven years ago.
Thank you.
That's comforting to me.
Thank you.
This is the first board meeting that I have even been publicly invited to. So maybe if the board wanted more community input, they could abide by some of those five-day, nine-day things that they were bringing up in their evaluation. Because if people are doing things on the sly and doing things, well, I don't get the paper. No offense, Bob, but.
I don't either, I'm making the ratings.
Right? I don't get the paper, because I, quite honestly, I can't afford a dollar right now. But I always had great service when I come here. My grandson came here for PT. The people that work at this hospital are amazing. And you guys need to keep them, it's not pushing the good people away, regardless of what the darn issues are. I couldn't care less about the darn insight. But if you want town involvement, this meeting says otherwise, sorry. If you want more town involvement with these board meetings, don't make them secret.
They're not secret.
They're always the first one I've heard of.
I don't know, but they're always public, they're always, the regular board meeting is always on the third, always on the third Thursdays. And special meetings are put on the website.
Donnie, may I comment on that?
Go ahead.
There, since I started coming to the meetings, there've been considerably more special meetings than regular meetings.
There has been.
And it's very hard for people in the community to realize, oh, tonight, when I was gonna do this with my kids and I could go to a meeting I just heard about. So I think, I think they got a good point, because I've experienced the difficulty.
Yeah, the special meeting, we've had a lot of special meetings lately, because, because come, you know, when Maureen retired, then that was the first time that the board had to elect the CEO in ten years.
Right, but the board could do better at getting those out sooner and more completely.
We could.
Yes, and that's what's being asked, wouldn't do it.
Absolutely.
I'd like, I'd like to, I have a comment, Nick.
Go ahead.
Please have a stand-up for us.
Go ahead.
I would like, I would like to respond to your, the reason our finances are in kind of a mess is because we didn't do account reconciliations, Maureen didn't do account reconciliation. Instead of hiring a CFO, she was the CFO interim, I mean, she was CEO slash CFO. So that was a combination job. She hired two, like Joyce said, she hired two people that weren't really health care accountants. And she was supposed to walk them through that. She wasn't getting the account reconciliations done, probably ever monthly. They were always behind, at some points, a year behind. So that means the data that the board was getting probably wasn't all that factual, because they hadn't been reconciled. So we had to hire, after she left, we had to hire a CPA to come in and try to reconcile our accounts for almost the whole year, from February, well, actually it was before February, because she hadn't reconciled way before. So we had to reconcile up to, for the, to get our financial audit done for twenty-two, twenty-three. And now we barely, barely just got that information. Have we got it yet?
We will have the information by Wednesday of next week.
So we should be getting our twenty-two, twenty-three financial audit done, and probably by, maybe.
No, the auditor contacted me today, because the amount of work that they will present the audit in June. There's a lot, there's a lot of work that goes into.
I know, I know. So anyway, now, because we couldn't get the information for that whole period of time through our CPA that we hired, we pretty much got rid of them and hired another company, and they're taking over and trying to get us that information. So we can just complete that audit. Now, we're gonna have to continue to look, to get the audit for twenty-three, twenty-four done, because it's coming up, okay? You should be working on that right now. So we're almost a year, maybe in arrears of account reconciliations.
I understand.
I mean, I did not come into an easy job.
No.
I came into a mess.
I know.
That has happened for fifteen years, let's try to straighten this out. Yes, Piper's on administrative leave, that's it, she's on administrative, she's not been terminated. I have not terminated any providers, no providers whatsoever.
I just wanna let you know that since I ran for the board, there's a very heavy emotional weight that's been put on me. Because people come and tell me things that I don't necessarily, there's two sides to every story, I understand that. But what I can tell you is, they talked about culture and it takes a long time to change.
It does, it takes a long time.
And I can just tell you, without naming names, that all the good employees in the hospital that make it work are shaking in their boots, they are terrified. And little by little, they're going to, if a better opportunity comes along, they're, they're gonna wander off. And that's a problem, because this is a little bitty town in a little bitty place. And if we have people that are Newcastle people that wanna live here, the most foolish thing we could ever do is to make the culture such that the people just wander away, because we won't get them back. And I just want you to know that, I don't know if you're hearing that.
No, and that's what I wanna say, is that those people should be sent to us, to the CEO, to the HR department, to say why.
Well, and the.
Because we're not here.
What I've been able to ascertain is, I think with the nursing staff as a whole, they look at what's happened to Piper, and if I ask you who the COO is, what's their first name? What is the first name of the COO of the hospital right now?
Well, like I said.
What's the CEO's first name of the hospital right now? Who is that? Please answer. What is the first name of the COO of the hospital? It is?
Thomas.
So it is, not Piper. And so people are looking at Piper, and Piper represented the heart and the culture of the hospital. And they think, gosh, if that can happen to Piper, it can happen to me. This is a much bigger deal with staff in. This is a disaster, this is gonna be a train wreck. And I, it is a heavy burden to hear these things, and I don't know if you're being told that, but you're gonna have an eventual, I don't know anybody, but eventually, these good people are gonna wander away and you will not get better. And all the kids at the high school that are gonna go to college, they are not gonna say, I wanna move back to Newcastle and spend my whole career there. Because they look at Piper and they said, look at this Piper who worked her way up, has been utterly loyal, and if they'll do that to her, they'll certainly do it to me. And people are terrified, and rightly so. It's, it's whatever the vision for the future is, the way you get more volume in the hospital is look at all the people that are unhappy, that are, that don't talk to you, they vote, who said they vote with their keys? They've come up to me and said, I just don't, Bob, you never hear from them. The way you get more volume in the hospital is, the culture has got to go back to the way that it was. And I've had lots, so this is, this will impede the vision. The vision of driving more volume can only happen if the community supports this hospital and the community is disgusted. Now, they maybe don't know everything, but they're disgusted by this move with Piper, and they're not gonna come here. We all go to Gillette and Rapid every week for groceries and stuff anyway, banking and stuff. They're just gonna not come back, and you will not get them back. This is the Rubicon. If you cross this, you can't go back. It's a big deal.
Trust is hard to gain, especially once you lose it.
So Randy, I mean, is there a timeline? Can you tell anybody in the community what your plan is, how much longer? We have to wait to see what Piper's.
We do have, yes, we do have to talk to our attorney, and that's the next step.
On the board.
Yeah, for the board, I can't talk to attorney without the board.
When's that gonna take place?
That will take place in executive session today.
Did you give Piper a timeline?
No.
Yes, no.
There's not a timeline.
Didn't you give her anything? I'm answering her. Okay.
Which one, this one I gotta hand up forever, so say it. Just tell me who, go ahead.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. In the assessment, it said more people interviewed, the CEO was doing the job, it's all safe. Okay, my next question is, do you, as a CEO, have any personal relationship with anybody that is owner or whatever?
I do not, I have no personal relationship, no, I do not.
That's been a big rumor.
Well, I just, the question is, have you worked with one of them, any of them before?
I did work, the board hired, when Steve was with another firm, the board in Texas, I didn't. The board hired them to do leadership development for the board.
And you guys have done twelve assessments in six months as H&amp;H?
Our first company was acquired by this one, so six months is the definition of H&amp;H, but not the definition of our work.
Has anybody on the board seen the letter that Piper got?
I have not seen it.
I haven't. I would encourage you to read it. I would encourage you to read it.
Who wrote the letter? Do you know who wrote the letter?
It was signed by your CEO.
And have you seen it already?
No.
So Mr. CEO, can you fill us in?
No, that is, that is personnel issue.
But why?
I don't think it really is though, when your nursing home is on the line.
The nursing home is not on that line, and Allison can answer the question.
All right, now, I do have a question, it's timely. Has Piper been asked whether she wants her personnel issue discussed by the board in an executive session? State Wyoming Public Meeting Law says you, the board can have an executive session to discuss personnel matters unless the person who's the subject of the matter wants it in public. So that's my question, has she been asked, does she want her issue discussed in executive session or does she want it discussed by the board in a public meeting?
Correct. You're an issue here? I know, the statute, so from that standpoint, no. No.
You should put it Allison.
Allison? Yeah, it's Allison's.
So there is nothing on the agenda having to do with this employee?
I'm not asking limited to this agenda, you're talking, in a future, you've just informed us today, it is a future soon to be special session, Piper will be discussed.
In the event there was an agenda item pertaining to employee employment, they would be informed and offered the right under the statute.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, but Allison, I think we're all assuming that when the board goes into executive session, that that may be a topic of discussion.
There will be no action taken following executive session. Right. It's a special meeting.
Allison, that's not the issue, Allison, the issue is, does Piper, has Piper been given the option to say, I want anything about me discussed, this personnel matter done by the board at a public, open board meeting? Because until she's been asked that question, there's no point saying there's an executive session about anything, because you don't have the authority to go into executive session.
There is nothing pertaining to the employee.
Yes, but there is an agenda item for an executive session where the board can discuss whatever they want, right?
No, it's actually, it says.
Okay, okay.
They have to announce.
It says, it says personnel issues, which is a vague.
Which raises questions.
So which personnel issue, so I don't agree with this.
Their notices might be always inadequate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing, and I was hoping to invite you, but unfortunately, it did not work out.
So Allison, I'll try one more time. I've read the notice to the special meeting once, a few days ago, so I'm functioning from memory. But I remember seeing that there's two, yeah, executive session that just makes a vague statement, consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a professional person or employee. That's such a broad blanket statement, that the community is assuming it could be about Piper, it could be about someone else. You're right, it's not in the notice, but it doesn't have to be, with such a broad topic. And so we're all assuming that's what's going to be discussed.
There will be no action taken by the board following the executive session.
You can't vote in executive session.
If there were to be action taken, it would have to be following another meeting where it's been properly noticed.
Okay, so what, so Allison, what you're saying is, the board's going into executive session, but they're going to discuss personnel issues about someone, but they are not for sure going to take any action? Is that what you're telling us?
We can't take action.
Okay.
After the exit. We can't, no, we can't, not today.
That's, that's a different question. I, I didn't ask, is the action gonna be taken when you come out of executive session? I asked, do you have the authority of the employee to go into executive session on her matter?
There is nothing that says we're going into executive session regarding an employee's termination, which is what the statute would indicate.
Allison, it does, it really does.
If you discuss personnel matters about an employee, she has a right to say, I want that done in the public board meeting.
Allison, are you looking at the special notice? I can read it again. Okay, it says, consider the appointment, employment of a professional person or employee. It specifically says what you're saying it doesn't say. I don't know why there's a point of confusion on this matter.
She approved it.
Did you hear them?
So she knows.
Yes, I can hear them. I don't know what they would like me to respond, I can't tell them exactly what the executive session pertains to, because it's an executive session.
Yes, and that's exactly the point, Allison, is it's a vague executive session where the board can talk about whomever they want in regards to personnel issues. That was the first starting point. You said, we can't talk about Piper because it's not in the special notice, you're right, her name's not in special notice. But the executive session allows the board to discuss personnel issues about someone, right? to discuss personnel issues about someone, right? Right, okay.
Piper would like that letter shown at the Randi Lindauer Center, please. Today. While the community is here, nobody would like to see it.
Can somebody read it?
I don't know.
Allison, um, and it's saying that she wants her person- She can't come to the hospital. She is, she can call.
Phone it, person.
She can come to this meeting.
Have you seen the contract? She's not allowed to come in this building.
But to the public, she can.
It does have a contract.
I mean, that's the same thing for everybody.
Have you guys seen the contract? That's the thing.
No.
I would encourage you to reage.
Can she call when?
Call it. Call the board right now.
Now, put her on speaker.
Thank you.
Maybe she could just read it herself.
Yeah, she can read it too.
Have her read it. Is that a soccer game?
Part of my concern is that none of this is on the agenda. We can hear me.
I know. He tries sitting here around.
This isn't on the agenda, then we've wasted two hours.
Exactly.
I got a question. I got something to say more than a question.
Okay.
Um, there was a lot of people out there in the other room, so I went out and said to them, if you need to ask any questions, get in there. And they all said, I want my job. So that's kinda sad to think that they can't even ask a question. Because they're gonna lose their job. So.
Did you get it?
There she is, Allison Piper. If we could talk to each other.
Piper, speak to Allison on my phone, please.
Hi, Allison.
Allison, can you hear her?
Allison, still speaking. Allison, can you hear her?
Allison, can you hear me?
Can't Piper speak?
Do you want to, can you just tell the group what you're consenting to?
She can hear, go ahead.
Sorry, I was on mute because I'm trying not to create background noise.
Go ahead, Piper.
That's fine if the letter's read.
Is that what she would like?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat. Now, where is it? Karen, you have the letter?
No, we don't hear.
Can you get it? Thank you.
You know, some of those folks wanna come in. We could crowd together.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There's chairs. There's chairs. We can move in.
There's a chair.
Come on. Sit on the table. Go for it. I tried, I tried to get him to come in.
There's a lot of room down here.
Guys, there's a chair here. There's one here. There's three chairs back here. There's two chairs back here.